Tomorrow at one. It's gonna be beautiful tomorrow at one. Big poppy?
I'm the same way.
You know, big poppy.
All I know is we, um, you were on patrol once, I would say, and then on this radio back then, there was no internet or something like that, and they said, you gotta listen to the World Series. All I managed to make a comment was, that's baseball, right? I got accused of being communist, I got accused of all this, I said, what, it's wrong? No, well, my speaker's on, I think my mic off.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we will return from recess, I'll ask that you stand and join us in a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, is a republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Might I ask that you all use your microphones, I've been told by the member of the public that they can't quite hear you well enough if you don't use your microphone.
Anyone specifically?
Well, you were good because you always used yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that in our efforts to move further away from the COVID debacle that has beset us for two years, one of the conditions under which our town state of emergency was declared has been satisfied, and that's all it takes for us to remove Special Directive Number Five. That expired as of three thirty-one, the thirty-first of March, when the governor's authority to declare emergency was also terminated, and that action results in our automatic conclusion of Special Directive Five. So, the town is no longer in a state of emergency, and the emergency powers granted at the president are no longer in effect. Any other announcements that need to be made? All right, I'll ask for approval of the minutes of March twenty-second.
Motion to approve the March twenty-second joint meeting with the Budget Committee.
Second, oh, sorry.
Unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Motion is made and seconded, are there questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. And then the approval of the minutes of March twenty-fourth.
Same motion for the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two Town Council Meeting.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thanks. Next is the Department Ed reports.
Motion to approve the town clerk's monthly activity report for March twenty-twenty-two unless anybody has any questions on that, or if the clerk would like to make any comments.
Second.
The motion's made and seconded, are there comments? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The town administrator.
I'll move that we place the town administrator's report on file, but maybe the town administrator can go over his his report so that the general public can know what's going on in town.
Second. Matt, thank you. Motion's made and seconded, Mr. Administrator.
Uh, thank you. Just a couple things that I would like to cover, particularly the capital budget. It's completed and it will be, um, I've, all of you have had a, uh, an opportunity to review that. The architect, Melissa Hutchison, it's working in aspects for the town hall, specifically the windows, so that we can go out for an RFP on that. The municipal resiliency projects, the report is due April fifteenth, and there is very little progress at this point, but I believe Counselor Riari Moore will be joining us, so we'll, I'm sure that will assist us to move forward with the project. Maple Road paving, the road cutting, and there has been some car, uh, road cutting or saw cutting, I should say, at the driveways in certain spots throughout Maple Avenue. They have removed some of the asphalt and they put it on hold for the next couple days, actually yesterday, today, and I believe tomorrow as well, due to the weather. They prefer not to be grinding the road down at this point in time, but wait until good weather, and I believe we have that coming next week. Public, uh, the public safety complex, um, the chief has, uh, Chief Patron has brought to my attention that we have a few issues there, indentations on the pavement as you exit the base. We have visited that, we're in the process of incorporating that as part of the paving on Maple, uh, Maple Avenue, since the company is in town. Otherwise, we would have to pay anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars just to dispatch them to come to town. So, we'll take advantage of that while they're here. The playground, quite a bit of work needs to be done there to make it safer. And, uh, school committee member Mike Rocha has been quite involved in that, in assisting, and we're gonna bring things up to par Saturday, April the thirtieth. We have, uh, three loads of mulch, well, I should say, wood fiber, not to confuse the two, because there's a difference between wood chips and the wood fiber that is safe to use in playgrounds. That's gonna be delivered on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, um, two hundred and forty cubic yards of that. And, um, public safety complex, there's quite a bit of work that's been done indoors, inside, I should say, specifically in the police area, and also in the fire department area. There's issues with mildew and mold on the carpets, so those are being removed. And also the furniture had some issues, had absorbed the moisture, so there were issues with mildew and mold, and those are being replaced as well. And whenever you have some time, you may wanna drop by and check. Police department's pretty much wrapped up, I believe, am I correct, Chief?
I was just there this afternoon, and it's a really nice working space and much more welcoming, so, great.
And we plan to do the same in the fire department section as well.
I just have just a few comments and observations, the MRP, uh, project, municipal resiliency project, Gary, I don't know if you wanna talk about, um, if you wanna enter and talk about this at all, but could you just, uh, Tony, can you just tell us what the three, quickly, the three projects that are involved in that?
Right, the three projects, South Shore.
And what's happening at South Shore, what, what does it, I mean, I'm asking you something I already know, so I'm just,
Right.
if you could just say.
Uh, South Shore, to be various, to be clear, I'm not quite sure of all the details in that, but, uh, because Don Maderos is the one that's been the point person, uh, but it's, South Shore is one of the areas that we cover, Townway and also John Day Road for drainage.
So.
Uh, Townway is to work on the stormwater drainage, and, stormwater, I should say, and the drainage that runs down the road there, uh, to sort of control and filter that as it goes into the river. That one I know specifically, John Day, we working on some drainage issues that are there as well. The specifics there, Bill Moore is the one that's been addressing that one more than I.
Right, so drainage on both those roads, and, and South Shore is, is putting in rocks? Gary, I know that we talked about it briefly, um.
Yeah. You and I were downstairs, I think, I had just spoken to Bob and Billy Ryan, who's on the Beach Commission, said that they were gonna bring in some rocks and some pavement to rebuild the beach, but they weren't gonna do it till the fall. And I told Billy, I think that's absolutely the wrong time to do it, cuz you're gonna be getting those winter storms, and whatever you put down isn't gonna be packed, so I asked him if he would go back and tell him a couple of counselors think that it should be done, um, sooner, as soon as possible, because, you know, I assume they're gonna dig down a little bit, and then they're gonna bring gravel and small rocks in there. And over the course of the summer, after they do that and they live it, it'll be a better area to park in. But also, all the summer traffic going back and forth is gonna pack that down, so when the winter does come, it's gonna be more hard-packed and be less likely to get washed away. If they do it in the fall, and I, and I'm, believe me, I'm not criticizing the Beach Commission, I guess they must have a reason to do it. But, uh, I just think as soon as possible would be the best time to do it, even if the beach didn't open up quite on time, I think in the end result, it'd be a better situation than waiting till the fall. And as I say, you're gonna have trucks driving over it, you're gonna have campus driving over it, you're gonna have a lot of vehicle traffic, that's all gonna crush that stuff down, so it's more hard-packed than what it will be in the fall. And of course, this time of year, we don't get very many storms, they don't start coming around till the beginning of September. That's, I mean.
Makes sense to me, Gary.
It would, I think it would behoove the Beach Commission, and obviously, I haven't been to any of the meetings to, uh, to, uh, say this to them, but I did tell it to Billy Ryan, Ryan, if he could bring it back to him, tell him that some of the council feel that, wait till the fall. I'm not how bad, I'm not sure how bad a shape it's in, but I just think the fall's the wrong time to do it, they may even wanna, I don't know if we gotta use the funds right away, but they may wanna wait till the March of the following year, twenty twenty-three, so. They can't, they gotta use, they gotta use the funds, yeah.
Must be used by March of this year, I mean, December of this year, I'm sorry.
We, has the, yes. Has the Beach Commission been, uh, formally advised of this position, or you're saying it's been a?
No, I, I, yeah, I never.
It would seem to me the, uh, the MRP would be the right team to address that, since it is our project that this is, this is part of. And I think we, if you wish, if you think it's important to.
Make a motion?
To exercise that, then let's, let's task. Right, right, right. The motion is, the motion that's on the floor is to accept the.
Right, let's vote on that, and then we can.
I just wanna continue on, on, on your document, if you don't mind, just quickly. On, on the playground, are we getting a yearly inspection on that? I don't see that verbiage in here.
A yearly inspection?
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, somebody, um, Bill Moore's gonna go through a training to do playground inspections going forward.
I just wanna add something.
Through the trust.
Yeah, I just wanna add something to your list, the entrance to Veterans Field, across from Bay Coast Bank, there's some really big potholes when you go in there, I'm sure everyone's gone in there, they're huge. I think that needs to be fixed.
The pocket, going into the.
Going in. Okay. It's, uh, it's right in front of the, what's the name of that road that goes in front of the school and?
Meeting House.
So, that's Meeting, Meeting House. But obviously, there's two entrances on Meeting House, so the one across from Bay Coast Bank, next to the Brownell House.
East entrance.
East entrance, exactly. I mean, they've been there forever. So, do I need to make a motion on that, cuz I'm not unhappy to, that's awful.
Well, I, I don't think you need to make a motion, if you're just asking me.
Task you to, yeah.
To test that, I will definitely look into it and make sure we take care of it.
Thank you.
The motion that on the table is to place on file the town administrator's report, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, to the question of whether or not we don't have for action on the agenda, an item which calls for us to address the Beach Commission, but I will take for action the fact that the, uh, MRP, the Municipal Resiliency Program Fund Team will bring that formally to the attention of the Beach Commission.
And I, you know, if there's a problem with that, I'd just like to have you come back and just say why they think it's better to do it in the fall than now, whether it's a time constraint?
Yes.
Or what it is.
Yes, that, that will be, uh, our intention, because as the administrators pointed out, we are, we owe a status report, and I want that status report, we all want that status report to be accurate.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank, thanks, Pat.
The next item is new business, new business one, a letter from the town clerk advising the council of an upcoming transition to a new vendor for land evidence records. And she's given us a memo that describes that, are there any questions about it, or clerk, if the clerk has any amplification that she may wish to give?
Well, I just wanted to advise you that there was gonna be a change coming up.
Thank you.
Motion, place on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place on file. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Second is a request from the moderator for Suzanne Madden, the current Assistant Town Moderator, be appointed the Assistant Town Moderator for the.
I'll move to reappoint Sue.
Second.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is to discuss and consider approval of a proposal of the Fire Chief to fill two vacancies in the Fire Department manning. One candidate that he will propose, well, would you, would you like me to, to say what it is that, that I'm aware of, and then, then you can, uh, augment that? One of the candidates he intends to propose is Jason De Silva, which is a name that you ought to recognize because he has prior service in Little Compton. He was hired in November of thirteen, and he resigned after about two-plus years, he was in twenty fifteen. At some point, the, the retirement that he, or the resignation that he tendered was not service-related, it was not something that he was, uh, found, uh, in fault of. He, uh, then has subsequently to that, uh, after a period of working on a different fire department, he has now said he, his preference is to return to us. The reason I bring all of this up is, it's a unique opportunity, given our specific, certain condition that we have in the Fire Department right now of a reduced manning situation. I'm going to propose to you that we direct the Fire Chief to offer employment to Jason De Silva, who has been evaluated by the normal process and lacks only a council interview. I'm gonna suggest that we, we do not interview Jason De Silva, so as to offer him a, an appointment tonight and get him on board as soon as possible, this is not, not somebody we don't know about.
Second. Apparently, you made a motion, sir. I thought you made a motion.
And Jay actually started in, in twenty ten as a, as a pot-timer at the home, and then he was appointed in thirteen.
Well said.
As a career player.
Yeah, he was a well-known hire when we hired him, he was, uh, fit right into the process.
He, he has all the credentials, he's one level two, he's kayak certified, he's gonna hit the town running fellow shifts right away.
Is Jason here?
No.
But my understanding is, we're gonna be down two firemen on Sunday, so those shifts are gonna be, have to be filled with overtime. If Jason comes on board, we'll be able to fill those shifts on regular time.
Sooner, yep. Because as you may know, the next request to fill the second position will require us to conduct an interview, my intention would be that we would set those interviews. I have, uh, just this evening been advised that there are two candidates to be interviewed, so we, we have two people from whom to choose our other ca, our other firefighter. Neither of those candidates, however, is able to, uh, be immediately integrated into the team.
One, one will be able to.
One will?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so his.
It'd be a lateral, right?
His, his is a lateral, the other candidate is a.
Fire Academy.
Fire Academy, uh, he, okay.
So, I know we have an executive session on next Thursday for fourteen at four-thirty. If everybody's available, I'd make the motion that we interview the.
We got, we got a motion on the table now.
Oh, okay, all right, what was it?
I was only explaining where we were going.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yep, all right, so, are there other questions regarding the motion that's on the table, which is to offer, or to direct the Fire Chief to offer employment without a second town council interview to Jason De Silva? All right, how will you vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead.
Now, uh, as I stated before, we have an executive session on next Thursday, four fourteen, at four-thirty. If everybody's available, I would suggest we meet at three-thirty to interview, interview these two candidates before the executive session.
You're killing me. I twisted the schedule to get to be able to make the four-thirty one, dude, cuz I got another one at six.
That's next Thursday, right?
Is it four o'clock or four-thirty?
Well, early or twenty-four, but we're saying get thirty-nine.
Well, because, yeah, because we.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So, three-thirty, but two before it was four, because it was only one.
You're doing this cuz it's my birthday, right, Gary, that's why you're doing this, okay, just so we know.
Okay.
Thought we took your birthday away when you came to the council.
Yeah, pretty much, I'll second, I'll, is that your motion to?
Yeah.
All right, I'll second it.
Three-thirty on four-fourteen, next Thursday, to interview two firemen, and then executive session at four-thirty, same afternoon.
Any discussion?
On three-thirty for the first candidate?
Yeah.
And four o'clock, forty-five, four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to authorize the council president to update the operations and maintenance agreement with effluential technologies. If you're aware, the sewage disposal system that we have uses a leaching field, that effluent, effluential technologies, as well as a, uh, handling tank, that effluential technologies takes care of on our behalf. I don't know, sitting here tonight, why we're being asked to renew this particular agreement. So, what I propose you give me, if you're, if you're willing, is authority to, um, discuss with them the need for an update, I believe it is as simple as being periodic, but I'd like to know that before we, uh, before we enter into it. And then, if I am satisfied with the answer, to execute on behalf of the town, the renewal of our relationship. If it is more than that, I will return to you with the specifics of why it is they're asking to update it.
Is that a motion, Bob?
Yes, I, I would prefer it not be my motion, since it's appointing me.
Since you've got the language down, I'll make the motion that the town council president reviews with effluential technologies about the Wilbur School, um, sep, yeah, wastewater treatment, um, agreement, go with them till his satisfaction, to see if he has to, uh, renew this, and if so, give him the authority to do so.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, is there further discussion?
Just quickly, this is on the list, or this topic is on the list for our offer funds.
For what?
Our American Recovery Act funds, am I saying it right?
You are saying it right.
Yeah. Is it one of the things on the wish list that we are going to use that money for?
No, this is the existing system, and it's the, it's the periodic monitoring of that system, chemical analysis, that sort of thing. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item of business is to request the administrator, uh, request from the administrator to advertise a request for proposals for, uh, to advertise two requests for proposals. The first is for our annual audit, it is at the three-year point where we solicit, uh, the auditor that will serve us for the next three years, so that's the first RFP. The second one is to advertise for a general contractor to carry out the repairs and construction associated with the town hall.
Motion to allow the town administrator to go forward with these two rec, uh, requests?
Second. The motion's made and seconded to advertise, uh, through RFP for the town audit and for the general contractor for the town hall, any discussion?
Contractor for the town hall, RFP, how is that going to happen? Being, uh, involved in a few RFPs in town on projects, gonna interview the contractor, uh, um, I mean, when we, you know, to, after we select them, um, how's it gonna work?
The RFP will solicit, uh, response to a specific set of area, and then we will select the, the, uh, the general contractor.
Yeah, we're gonna have a clerk that works for that, or, I mean, have you thought about that far on?
We, let me, let me have the administrator tell you what, we've already been down that path.
Right, a, as you recall, we did put out for a project manager, uh, the return was that it would have cost the town over two hundred thousand dollars to engage such person or firm that would be. So, at this point in time, between Bill, Peter and I, we thought that we could address this, the town hall, by doing an RFP for a general contractor that will oversee the subcontractors coming in to do the work. And Bill is willing to keep tabs along with Peter, you know, on what's going on as reps from the town. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is the, um, request for the council to ratify the town administrator's actions in which he did an emergency hire of a person to, uh, man the, uh, tax assessor's office, where both the assessor and the assessor's clerk were out for a period of time. That person was, uh, uh, performed her duties and then is no longer needed, it appears.
Motion to ratify, um, with, with just the caveat that this was a temp thing to fill a gap, because there was nobody there, this wasn't a permanent hire, this was just a.
Yes.
There was a shortcoming and we needed to fill it in a hurry.
If I may, Mr. President.
Sure.
You are very correct, this was just a temporary, because both of the employees had to be absent, one for medical reasons, other for a bereavement, and, uh, this is a bad time not to have someone in the office that could answer our taxpayers, you know, especially the assessments. There were, uh, folks were coming in and they needed to get their answers. And this individual who came in temporarily, uh, was able to do both, you know, to provide the information. She's a, a professional appraiser, um, and she is also has quite a bit of knowledge of assessments, obviously, and, uh, she actually did a great job, and she may come back for a couple more days, uh, next week, just to sort of wrap up things with Denise. And she's considered a vendor, not an employee.
Yeah, so I made the motion, I don't know if anybody seconded it.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Tony, good job.
Thank you.
Next, sitting as Board of License Commissioners, we're asked, uh, to approve a Class F one-day retail beverage license for each of five dates in August, third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. Each of those will be for a summer concert series.
Motion to approve, and I see that they wanna block, uh, the traffic in the street in front of the community center, so they need to talk to the police chief about that.
Second.
With concerns by the police chief and all other necessary paperwork that needs to be filed for.
So, to be clear, the motion is made and seconded for the purpose of granting the Class F one-day, uh, beverage license. As you, go ahead, as you pointed out, they have stated separately, a letter will be submitted to the council requesting that the street be blocked, so we, we will see that as a separate.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a letter from the Republican Town Committee asking permission to reschedule the Antique Car Show, originally scheduled from Ju, for June twelfth, to reschedule it to June eleventh.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is an application for a mobile food establishment permit received from La Costa Lobster and Tacos to be used during the June fourth Pride Food Truck Festival on the Commons.
Um, I, I assume there's a permit left for this, what, we have five permits for these vendors?
You just have enough.
Oh, okay. Okay, motion to approve.
Second, discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thanks. The next is a resolution that's adopted by the Woonsocket City Council that opposes the Senate and House bills. Both of those bills, uh, mandate translation services plans. Specifically, in order to satisfy the Open Meetings Act, a public body needs to, should this bill become law, needs to provide, uh, mandatory translation services, and the bill specifies that each entity must provide a plan for such a, an event. Woonsocket's basic position has, is that this is a, uh, extraordinary unfunded mandate in which, uh, a body could be convened and asked to. in which a body could be convened and asked to provide translation services for a language for which they were not prepared, and that then would be, were they to proceed, that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, is my understanding of how it would be implemented. So, their position, Woonsocket's, is that's unacceptable.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we agree with the resolution by the City of Woonsocket to be in opposition to these two bills. Maybe we sent a, I don't know, I don't think.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion's made and seconded, what was your question, sorry?
Whether we need to do our own or just support, support this one.
Any discussion?
So, your, your motion, Gary, just we support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank, I'm abstaining. Four votes in favor and one abstention, thank you. The next item of business is a letter received from the Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island supplying copies of the Senate bill, a copy of the gubernatorial proclamation designating April 24th as a day of remembrance, and a copy of the House bill. I would propose that we parallel that with a town council proclamation in a similar format to the governor, for a day of remembrance in Little Compton on the 24th of April of the Armenian genocide.
Is that a motion?
That is my motion.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is documents from the, sent from the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation. It's a, it's a multi-purpose document, it's titled 2021, How Is My City or Town Doing? It also specifies within that document what our 2023 municipal solid waste cap allowances If you compare our performance to state averages, we are above average, we are certainly not satisfied with simply being above average, and we're continuing to press for recycling. We remain one of the few places where ones need to separate recyclables, but we think that's in our best interest in order to reduce runs to Johnston, that is, we compact all of our cardboard.
Motion to place on file.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I would like.
Go ahead.
You know, I think we keep saying this, and it feels like we're beating a dead horse, but we really need to do some more recycling, and I think the recycling goes way up when our summer residents come into town. I don't think there is on top of recycling as much as they should be, so if we can all get together and do more recycling, I think it would be the appropriate thing to save the town money and to make the world a better place by recycling. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I also, is there any way to dispute the seasonally adjusted population with a calculator cap from? Because they say our seasonally adjusted population is 4,200 residents, and I think that that's.
That's a good question, I'm not so sure if we can dispute, but I can inquire about it, you know?
When you figure for three months out of the year, our population.
Well, you're taking that supposedly from the census.
Yeah, we have been to that well before, I certainly believe that it's been a few years, it's probably worth our while to go back and say, we'd, we'd like to know how you calculated our seasonally adjusted population. It is, if you look at it, we, we get credited with a percentage that seems fairly significant, and, and that's the argument that we made last time, was, but it isn't what we think we have for a summer population, and it gets into that kind of a hypothetical, but, yeah. We, we have a very good relationship with RYRIK, and we certainly, the administrator can ask that question. So, we'll do it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The next is the consent calendar.
Motion place a consent calendar on file, second.
Discussion there. All in favor?
Aye.
The signs are already up, by the way, 35 mile an hour signs on.
Motion to approve the payment of bills as written, plus one additional bill that has to be added. The town's going to send flowers in memory of Mark Swawski, Gloria Ardet, which is Denise's mom, and in memory of John J. DeSantis, which is Joe DeSantis, our finance director's father, of $50 per. Second.
The motion is made and seconded to pay the listed bills, as well as the three items that Councilor Maderon has mentioned.
Those items for the $50 are going to go to donations that, they're not for flowers, they're for denosia, donations to certain, um. Entities, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a little stuck there.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. There being no further business before the council, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.